I would do that now if somebody tried to take me to a soccer.
We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the January 22nd, 2024 work session for the Shawnee County Board of County Commissioners. My name is Kevin Cook. I serve as the Chair this year, also representing District Two. Joining me today, I have Commissioner Aaron Mays, I have Commissioner Bill Rippon, and then Jonathan Brzon, our Assistant County Counselor, is also filling in. So we have a couple of things this morning. We're going to start with a report from our Extension Agent, Candace Merple. Candace, if you can kick us off.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Candace Merple, Director of the Shawnee County Extension Office. I'm so happy to talk to you today about our fourth quarter, the end of last year. I do appreciate these opportunities so you guys can see throughout the year what we're up to at the office. We did have 1,789 direct educational contacts. So those aren't the people just stopping in to get a publication or calling us on the phone. We're helping them as well. These are the people involved in our programming and getting, we're getting their demographic information and helping them. Not on this slide is we are also reaching 18% of our contacts are of Hispanic ethnicity. And I got an email from K-State a week ago that for the second year in a row, our office has achieved parity, which means the demographics of the people our office is serving match the percentage demographics of Shawnee County. So the people we're serving look like our county. And I don't know about this year, but last year, we were one of three units in the state who achieved parity. So I'm very proud of our office. That is an office-wide effort. The fourth quarter is a lot of celebrating in with our education. I'm going to start with 4H. We took five youth to the Kansas Youth Leadership Forum in Rock Springs 4H Center, which is additional leadership training that youth sign up for. And I always just want to point that out. Nobody makes these kids spend two days at Rock Springs and get these leadership lessons. They do it. And it's a great part of Kansas 4H. And Meredith Burgess, a student at Silver Lake High School, was actually elected to the Youth Leadership Council for all of Kansas 4H, representing the northeast part of our state. And we haven't had a representative on that council. I think my second year as 4H agent, so a long time ago, Luke Garrison was on there. And he actually serves on the Extension Board in Johnson County now. Should tell you how old he is. And then our Achievement Night was in Barreton, and we had five recipients of the Kansas 4H Key Award, which is the highest achievement you can get in Kansas 4H. And so I was excited that that many students did that much extra to get that recognition. In Community Vitality, we had our annual meeting in the fourth quarter. We had it in Rossville, which was awesome because we will rotate having one annual meeting out in the county and one in Topeka. So it was nice to get out in the county. And at that meeting, we elected our nine-member Volunteer Board, who represent all three Commission Districts and all four programming areas of Extension. And we even got a couple guys on the board this year. So we worked on that. Last year, it was all ladies. Expanded Food and Nutrition doesn't really have a lot of photo opportunities because of the audience that Lisa works with. But they are continuing to do great partnerships, great work with partners. They've worked with LULAC, Scent, and the Live Well Shawnee County Coalition. Snap Ed is working with all of those people doing nutrition education. And then the FNP Youth Programming is currently working with Eisenhower Middle School, T-Calc, and McCochran Elementary to teach the nutrition classes to their students. And that is a heavy lift because to do those classes, I think they have to have six hours to do them. So they, we get like 20 minutes at a time when we go into a school. So it is a lot of sessions, a lot of staff time to get them that nutrition education. But Lisa's staff reached 33 households that last quarter of the year, including 123 family members. And I have some of their outcomes on your one-page report. It's very impressive. Horticulture, the Master Gardeners had their recognition banquet. But I wanted to highlight that Lane Wiens had his first Master Gardener Volunteer Class. So every year, we recruit Master Gardener Volunteers. They have to do 13 sessions to be trained Master Gardeners. He started with nine, he ended with eight. I told him, that's not bad to get that percentage through the whole class. And they learn things ranging from turf grass management to disease identification and control. And their next growing season, all of these volunteers will be working the response line that's open to all Shawnee County residents to call in. And then the other picture is the President of Master Gardeners, Diane Goheen, was recognized at our annual meeting as our Extension Appreciation Award winner. Diane does a lot for our entire office, not just the Master Gardeners. I also wanted to report on Susan's programming this quarter. Again, her Medicare Part D program happens during that time, open enrollment. She counseled 165 individuals through open enrollment for Medicare Part D. She is a trained Senior Health Insurance Counselor for Kansas. And this is a free program to help Shawnee County residents make informed decisions for their drug plan as a part of Medicare. Not everybody she counseles changes plans, but the ones that did this year saved a combined $108,000 on their prescription drug plan. So it's a great service, but again, not one of those that's really open to photo opportunities. I'm happy to introduce Abigail Gettinger, our Agriculture and Natural Resources Agent. At our last quarterly update, it was her first day. So she made it for a whole quarter. And she's already tackling very important topics to Shawnee County. And so I'm happy to have her come and share with you more about what she is doing.
Thank you, Candace. Good morning, everyone. I'm excited to be here with you today. As Candace mentioned, the last time that I was here was my first day on the job. And so today, I'm just excited to get to share with you how I've been investing my time in roughly the last three months, and kind of my vision coming in and where I'm wanting to go moving forward. So I'd actually written in my cover letter coming in that I believe that the most natural, important natural resource that we have is people, and that it is noble work to be able to provide information that is accurate and relevant to all people, to be able to improve their lives. And so my overall goal as a new Ag and Natural Resources Extension Agent is to be able to fulfill that mission by improving people's lives in meaningful and measurable ways, by connecting with residents in the county, learning what the needs are, and then meeting those needs with the resources and education that we have available to us. And so really, I kind of come up with three areas I've been investing my time in, in the last three months. And one is in establishing my personal system, building my relational network, and learning my county and office. So one of the ways I've been establishing my personal system is to go ahead and come up with an intake form for all of the questions that we come in. As Candace mentioned, we do actual structured educational programming, but a lot of the information that comes out of the office is when people call in with a phone call or an email on a specific problem that they have. And so it's really important to be able to have a system to keep track of the case progress and answers that we're providing in the office. I've also been working to come up with informational guidance documents on the services and resources that we have in the office that are really commonly used. One of those areas is in our Soil Program. We have a really robust soil program in Shawnee County. There were 397 soil tests that came out of the office in 2023. So that is a lot. And out of those, 128 were field tests. So I'm working to create a couple of documents for our Soil Program. One is a comprehensive document that provides information on every single testing element that you can test for at K-State, and why you would want to test for it, and in what situations you would want to test for it.
Hey, Abigail, real quick, on the, you're probably going to get to it, and I'm probably jumping ahead of myself, but on the soil samples, those soil samples aren't just limited to people that have like farms or agriculture. It can be people just, you know, if I have problems getting stuff to grow in my yard, or I have the wrong stuff growing in my yard, and I want to know what to do to get better soil samples, I can take a soil sample and talk to you about it?
Absolutely. So you can get a sample for your garden, or your lawn, or your field. And depending on which situation you're in, the sampling procedure might be a little bit different. And so I'm actually working to create a comprehensive testing, step-by-step guide on how to test whether you're going in a lawn, or a garden, or a no-till field versus a regular till field. So yes, absolutely. If you're having problems with your lawn, you can get a soil test and bring that in as well. And so beyond establishing my own personal system, I've been working to just get to know the people in Shawnee County and work to build my relational network, both with citizens, but as well as organizations that we commonly work with. And so I've been really thankful in the last month for the different agents who have worked to be able to introduce me to people at Farm Bureau and Tar Water Farm and Home Supply. I've also been working with Douglas County, K-State Research and Extension, and different agencies that they are working with on a whole farm health series that they're planning for this spring. I was also able to get to participate in the Bankers Award Tour that is done with the Conservation District, as well as the local NRCS office. I was able to get to meet some more of my office mates with the Master Gardener Recognition Night. And thank you to Commissioner Rippon for inviting me to attend the Middle Kansas River Watershed Restoration Protection Strategy Meeting. I've also been able to attend the Kansas River Valley Farm Advisor Meeting. And usually there's an Eastern Kansas Grazing School that happens. And this year, Shawnee County was an area that we were looking at hosting that. So I hosted a planning meeting. We attended a farm tour for that. Another way that I've been able to build my relational network was by attending the Topeka Farm Show and hosting a booth. One of the things that is really important about Extension is raising awareness of what we do and the services that we have to offer. And so despite the bad weather, we were able to reach 126 individuals who we either had some type of educational conversation with, or provided a publication to this year. And something that I wanted to try this year was to have a way to interact and bring people in to talk with us. So I created a game with our TV and our 4H buzzer system to quiz people over how K-State Extension ties into the Land Grant University mission, and also to highlight the different resources that we offer in all of our different areas, not only in agriculture, but in family and consumer sciences, and 4H youth development and community vitality. One of my favorite parts was just getting to have people learn that we can do things, like the new-to-Medicare appointments that Susan does, that we are more than just Ag. And so that was a really positive experience. And in between all of those different meetings, we've been able to still meet individual questions that have been coming into the office. I just wanted to highlight an example of one question that came in. We had somebody who reached out to us asking if we had a soil penetrometer. They were wanting to figure out if compaction in their yard was going to be able to prohibit growth. And while our office doesn't have a soil penetrometer, I was able to reach out to K-State and see if we could borrow one. And we were able to. So Lane Wiens and I, our Horticulture Agent, drove up to Manhattan and received training on how to use the soil penetrometer. And so we're able to come and help that client learn the different areas in their yard. We're able to take measurements, create a graph, and alleviate some of their concerns, and also show at what depths in the soil profile there would be compaction or pressure that a root wouldn't be able to penetrate through very easily. And so lastly, I've been spending time working to learn just my role in the office, and then also working just to get to know my county more. And so part of my job is assisting with the 4H livestock side of things. And so I've been able to attend the livestock committee meetings. And I was able to attend the annual banquet. And I was able to participate a little bit with that. And then taking care of different logistics, like ordering the livestock EID tags that are used for animals at the county fair, and then learning my role in the upcoming Farm DU program that we'll be putting on this year, and then the Shawnee County Fair. And so I have to laugh because when I showed Candace my slides, she said, is that Missouri? And I said, no. That's my drawing of Shawnee County. They actually do look a little bit similar if you pull them up and put them side by side. But moving forward, as I step into developing actual educational programs to meet the needs of the community, I think one of the most important things is learning who is in the community and what those needs actually are. And so something that we're planning to do is to conduct a needs assessment. And I'm particularly interested in learning what educational topics are going to be used by age. So looking at what are ways that I can get into schools and promote agriculture there, and what are those needs? And then looking at different generations and seeing where can I best meet those educational needs with the resources that we have. I'd also like to learn by entity, what ways I can partner with others to provide education. So RAPS, or looking at the different organizations that have headquarters here in Topeka. I think it's wonderful how many different organizations we have in Topeka, and looking at how I can talk with them and work with them to meet the mission of educating those in Shawnee County. That is one of my goals, is to be able to also provide education with other entities. And then by location, some of the needs for agricultural programming might look different in Topeka than they would in Dover or Barreton. And so really looking at getting out into the community and seeing if there are community-specific concerns or needs that I can address. And so with that, in summary, I'm just excited to continue to learn about the community and educational needs. And I look forward to serving the residents as I move forward towards 2025. And with that, I just wanted to say thank you and ask if there are any questions for Candace and I.
Some people hit the ground running on a new job, but that doesn't, that doesn't describe you. You've hit the ground in Zoom. But yeah, well, that's very impressive what all you've done in, what, a month or two?
One or three months.
Yeah, wow, okay.
Again, I just might reiterate, for those that are watching at home, this applies, all the services of the Kansas State Extension Office apply to everybody in Shawnee County, whether you live in town or out in the county. And your services are available. So the compaction, I mean, I think that's very fascinating. A lot of times, people wonder, if I plant, will this survive, you know? And making sure that we get good information there, and knowing what to plant, too.
Absolutely. And we have resources if people are looking for, hey, do we have a native plant list? I'm wanting to do native plant lists. We can help people with that. And so even if we don't have resources, we work to find you research-based information.
Very good.
Thank you.
And Candace, if people want to contact your office, what's the best way to do that?
So some people don't know, but our office is right behind the Stormont Vale Event Center on Western, 1740 Southwest Western. Our website is shawnee.ksu.edu, and that's an easy way to find all of our emails, our phone numbers, and what programs that we are offering. But yeah, I agree with Commissioner Rippon. It's like, you saw why we hired Abigail, right? She's been, she's doing a great job.
Very good. Thank you. Our second item for our work session this morning is Dusty Nichols with Emergency Management to talk about CERT and what that stands for, and why all these people are here in their bright shirts.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dusty Nichols, Emergency Management. I just want to briefly describe what CERT is, of course, I answer those questions, and then turn it over to Jake Henry here to talk about exactly why we have a nice group here. In 1985, the concept of CERT was developed by the Fire Department in Los Angeles. And they basically was teaching citizens how to take care of themselves. There's that level of expectation from first responders, that personal accountability and taking care of yourselves, that survival instinct. We're going to give them tools to help do that. And so they started the concept there. And then 1987, the Whittier Narrows earthquake, Southern California struck, and that kind of prompted even more the need for that. And a few years later, CERT become a national program under FEMA. And right after 2001, after the attacks, there, there was a Citizens Corps group that was brought together. There was a lot of people wanting to volunteer to do something in their community to help. And so Citizens Corps was developed, which consisted of the Medical Reserve Corps, MRC, which we have here in Shawnee County, a Fire Corps, which, there's a version of it here in Shawnee County as well, the VIPS, Topeka Police Department, Volunteers of Police Service manages that volunteer group. And of course, we have CERT, the Community Emergency Response Team. This training is, there's some dedication from these people who go through this training. And I don't want to steal Jake's thunder, and I definitely don't want to steal the thunder of the people that are here who've gone through this class. But I do want to just say, this has been revitalized. Pre-COVID, we had a pretty solid CERT group. During COVID, of course, things happened in those groups, and we're trying to reestablish those situations. But pre-COVID, we had about 200 trained CERT volunteers, and we started doing a crossover with the Medical Reserve Corps. And at that time, Erin McGinnis was running the CERT here, which was, she was very on top. She's gone on to bigger things, obviously. So she's doing very well. But John Moyer stepped in her shoes, very big shoes, and he's doing a fantastic job as well. So I definitely wanted to make sure I mention those people by name. So Jake, would you like to come up?
Good morning. The reason, as Dusty said, that we wanted to come today is to both congratulate these folks on their, on their hard work as they went through this 24-hour basic training course, but then also shed some light on the work that they've already done in the community. These folks went through four days, four separate dates of training that consisted of a total of 24 hours, roughly. And then once they were finished and they had graduated, we had the winter storm that, that brought cold temp, seriously cold temperatures and such. And so when that, when that occurred, and there was this request for warming centers, we put word out to these freshly graduated citizens that had been through the CERT Basic Academy, and said, hey, there's warming centers that need assistance. There's folks that need availability of that kind of a resource. And John put that out, once I contacted him. And then our, some of our ESF partners, we then find out, as I'm reading down the list of warming centers, I see Central Park Christian Church, which is where these folks are from. So they, they really took that approach, you know, that Dusty was talking about in terms of having neighborhoods help themselves. They take that approach, you know, whether it's crime, or helping people have a place to stay, or get a meal, all of those kinds of things. And so during this winter storm, they actually opened up their own warming center. We didn't get asked for help. Those folks just did it. And so it was pretty remarkable. Definitely, it definitely felt like quite an achievement that these people have, have done so quickly, the impact that they have in their community. They really take the approach of, let's help our own neighborhood, be able to help ourselves. And so the fact that they already had that approach, and then they went through this basic training there, are a very solid foundation for this CERT team. So we wanted to bring them here this morning, congratulate them, give them their certificates for graduation, and just thank them for their hard work that they've already shown.
Great. That's fantastic. Very good. Aaron? Great.
So Dusty is going to come up here. We're going to call you out by name. If you want to come up, I'll give you your certificate. And then if you want to follow, it's sitting over here. And then once we're finished, we'll bring everybody up for one group photo together. Okay? All right. First person, Eddie Field. Tabitha Wooton. Kevin Wooton. Chelsea Wooton. Richard Murray. Elizabeth Murray. Barbara Heston. Thomas Blair. Shannon Sedowski. And I'd also like to say, these, unfortunately, there were, there were other members who couldn't be here today, but we, we thank them as well. This is just a sample of this great group. But as you can see, there's, their dedication is, is pretty remarkable, and we thank them for that.
Want to have a group photo with everybody?
All right, looks good.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
John, can you give us just one second? Just one last thing for asking if you had any questions, sir. This is John Moyer. This is our civilian lead for our CERT team. He was part of the CERT team pre-COVID as well. So he's done a lot of work. And I just wanted you to, if you see him out and about, this guy busts his butt for the.
Appreciate you for your work.
Well, before you guys all leave, does anybody want to say anything about what you've enjoyed from working with CERT, or what you've learned, or is there anything that jumps out at you? I know, having, having gone through CERT myself, I mean, it is a lot of work. And there's a, the book is big and thick, and there's a lot of reading, too.
Anybody want to come up? There we go.
I actually was a past employee of Shawnee County. I worked for the Shawnee County Health Agency, which no longer exists, of course. But having worked there as both a local health department and a federally qualified health center, after 22, I went through FEMA, as Dusty referred to. We went through the FEMA training. And last year, having seen a bulletin come out under the Department of Homeland about a heightened alert, and mentioned faith-based institutions being in one of those target areas, perhaps, it came to mind to me about Central Park Christian Church, which is our church home. The very next day, after that bulletin came out, a news article stated that faith-based institutions in Wichita, Kansas, had come together to start planning in the event of some type of targeted attack within their community. And I thought, why not Topeka, Kansas? But at least not, at least we could start within our own church community. And so that's when I contacted John Moyer and said, can we get on board with CERT? And so that's kind of what started the ball rolling. And John had mentioned, is there anyone else that you could bring on board? And I thought, well, you know, I don't know. But it was fascinating, once that bulletin went out to church members. It was surprising to him. It was surprising to me. We instantly had 27 people interested. And we were going to open it up to other churches within the Central Park area, and John said, no. We need to cut it off here. We're hoping that we can bring other churches within our area together, so that we have a concerted working relationship in that arena, so that if we need to respond, we have the coordination and the understanding of how to work together as CERT volunteers. We are going to start developing within our church a resource team, so that we are better prepared. We do have homeless that walk through our doors. And so we're trying to understand how we can respond better to just their situation. CERT training is helping us to understand how to do that. So it has helped us immensely. So it has helped us immensely in just understanding our community. So we appreciate the time that was given to us, the knowledge, the experience, and we hope to take it and help spread it and grow it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a little more on the CERT training itself. Jake indicated it was about 24 hours, it's four days, we break it up. It is the experts from the fields, so if we are, we're doing a block on firefighting, we have a firefighter coming to teach that block and et cetera, medical, same kind of thing. I do want to also mention, CERT programs are out there for CERT for campuses, for schools, colleges, CERT for business. If you're trying to develop your own internal to your company, your organization, the response team, you can have that CERT for organizations. There's Teen CERT. So there's lots of variations of this program that can happen. I do want to ask, if you're interested in having a CERT class or having a CERT class in your organization or your neighborhood, please contact Jake. You can go to shawneecounty.sncu.us/EM, and you'll see our, our contact information on that page. Jake's information is there, John Moyer's is also there as far as CERT. I would just ask, please be patient with us. When we put this out, sometimes we get a big flood of people asking to do this. There's a lot of logistics that have to go with this, and we are very limited on staff, especially when we're working, you know, other issues as well. So please be patient with us, but we definitely are interested in holding future classes. We're also looking at setting up classes that we can better assist with ADA, alternate languages, those kinds of things, too. So we are definitely thinking bigger than we have in the past, but it does take us some time, so. Any questions, sir?
Questions?
This is just fantastic, though. It's great to see community members stepping up and, and helping us be prepared in case something happens, and, you know, to deal with the things that are happening now, so. Thanks for, for everything you guys are doing.
I agree with that completely, so thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
Okay. Does anybody have any public comment? Any member of the public wants to address the Commission on anything? Is there any administrative communications from any department head or member of the county? Seeing none, we're adjourned.